Good. So I'll go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for December 18th, 2018. First on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. I'm aware of one change. Previously, the public hearing for the dock ordinance was planned to be held tonight, but that has been removed from the agenda, bumped to February 19th. Is there any other changes or additions?
That would be the only change would be adding 3C.
Adding 3C, but removing 3C?
Well, no, adding 3C so that the Planning Commission can continue the public hearing to the February meeting. I think you have to, you have to vote on it.
Oh, okay. We'll add it to the agenda so that we can move it.
So that you can extend the, the public hearing? Exactly.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. So I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented with the additional item 3C. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will proceed accordingly. Next on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from November 20th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any adjustments or additions?
None here.
I had one change under item 3B, which is on page three, regarding the motion by Chair Lotion to close the hearing. I'm confident that there was a second to that motion to close the hearing, but we didn't make note of it.
Good point.
And we typically note the second, so if you wouldn't mind checking the, checking for who that was and adding it just so we're all on, on the same page.
Staff will, thank you.
Thank you. With that change, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented with that change. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So next up is discussion items, and we've got three items on our agenda tonight, starting with the public hearing for 6550 Astro Trail lot width variance.
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Dan and Lucy McCurney are applying for a lot width variance to create a new lot along Astro Trail. The minimum lot width is 125 feet. They are proposing lot widths of 130 feet for a new lot and 110 feet for an existing lot. The property is located on Astro Trail. Lake Virginia is to the west. Here's Astro Trail in front of you. In 2013, the city approved, improved Astro Trail, including adding sanitary sewer pipes that would provide municipal sewer to the properties along Astro Trail. To do that, they had to figure out the financing of the improvements in Astro Trail. And what they did was they met with each one of the property owners along Astro Trail and figured out how in the future could their lots be subdivided? And then, then they basically created additional fake lots and then assessed those property owners for, for those additional fake lots. The subject property at 6550 Astro Trail was deemed to have three, or two additional lots along with the existing lot. And I just want to note that the, tonight's application is for the variance from the lot width, it's not for the subdivision itself. The simple subdivision goes to the city council, so this is a recommendation for the lot width. And then the subdivision request and the lot width variance request would go to the city council at their next meeting. Going through the variance review criteria, there's four criteria for the Planning Commission to consider. First one, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the ordinance? Staff's comment is that the property owner was assessed for Astro Trail for three lots, thus creating a third lot with a lot width variance is a reasonable use. Second one, is the plight of the property owner due to circumstances unique to the property that have not been created by the landowner? Staff's comment is that in 2017, it was staff, not the property owner, that deemed that three lots could be divided on this property meeting the ordinance. And therefore, the property owner was assessed the, for three lots to finance the improvements of Astro Trail. Third, will the variance, if granted, alter the essential character of the area? As you can see from the aerial, there are a number of large lots with wide street frontage. However, the adjacent lot, which again is a flag lot, only has a 30-foot lot width. If, the fourth one, is, if the variance is granted, will the outcome be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and consistent with the comprehensive plan? The intent of the minimum lot width is to ensure, for, basically mostly for public safety, so that the streets, or the fire and the police can view each of the single-family lots, so you don't have a house behind a house, that if something happens, people are stealing things, that the police can't see that. So that, that's the intent of the lot width. The other thing that I didn't put down in the staff report, but it just occurred to me this today, is that this, if this was, if property was strictly zoned R1, it would have a minimum lot width of 80 feet. Because it's in the shoreline ordinance, it has a minimum lot width of 125 feet. That, that shoreline ordinance goes 1,000 feet from the prop, the lake. So staff kind of questions the, the intent of having a minimum lot width of 125 feet, 1,000 feet from the lake, and how that impacts the lake, or how it doesn't impact the lake. We normally would think the hardcover and the size of a lot is what impacts the lake, not necessarily a lot width. And so staff is comfortable recommending approval of lot width variance because it seems 125 feet is excessive already. They've made the, they've made the request as small as possible, and it's, and we, we put down, I think, eight findings of facts that we, that the Planning Commission can discuss and add or subtract to, in the staff report. So with that, staff is recommending this, the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the variance to reduce the lot width from 125 feet to 110 feet at 6550 Astro Trail, based on the findings listed in the staff report. And then, as you can see, the only people here are Dan and Lucy, the applicants, that if you have any questions, I'm sure they can answer them.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Let me question that, Patrick. Why couldn't we move the southerly line of the parcel A to make parcel B a little more compliant, especially if parcel A be not affect, not affected by the shoreline district? Didn't we also talk about correcting that shoreline district gray area because we had too many lots like this that were affected by the district? And where'd we end up with that, do you guys remember? Talked about it, I think, three or four meetings ago, because the shoreline district was so wide, it's affecting so many interior lots that we're not repairing.
It's, well, I think that discussion you're, you're reflecting on had to do with setbacks.
Yes.
It had to do with rear yard setbacks, which wasn't practical for rear yards which did not face waterfront. They were either perpendicular or faced away.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff, you're correct on that.
We, staff is working with Hoyson and Kogler, and this actually started before I started working here, with the shoreline ordinance. And we, that's one of the questions I'm going to raise with the shoreline ordinance is why do they even have a minimum lot width for non-reparian lots? I can understand why you would have one for reparian lots, because you want to limit the number of access to the lake, and that's when the lot width comes in, into play. But the lot width from non-reparian doesn't really impact the water quality. To your question, so this one, it's the, lot A is the new lot, and this is 130 feet, and lot B is the existing lot, and this one's the 110 feet. They wanted to make sure that the new lot met the standards, because that's the lot they're selling, not necessarily this lot. Again, staff is comfortable with the proposal. They actually wanted it, when they first came in, with a more narrow lot. We encouraged them to make that wider, and that's how we came up with this proposal.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Any other discussion or questions?
I just, looking at the thing as a whole, it's like the city's already really committed to building these, making these available for sale and having other buildings on them, with the agreement of the property owners. Otherwise, they wouldn't have pursued having an assessment and a utility stub to the property.
It seemed like that was original intent in any way.
So, and, and of course, I would guess the property owner bought the property, so hopefully in the future, they could do this, and that's what you do when you buy property. You look to gain monies off of it and use it in a way that's feasible, and staff found it was feasible to leave them three stubs for those three lots. Other than this, the situation that the city's in, or the pre-assessed stuff, I don't see a problem with it, even if that wasn't in place, just from the ownership of the lot. So even with that aside, I, I don't have a problem with the, the variance that's being requested. And then with that in place, that just doubles it for me to say, yes, this is something we committed to these property owners that we should extend through the variance. That's my thoughts on it.
I totally agree with Todd. The only thing I have a question, just from a practicality standpoint, for you guys for sale, would it make sense to take that, we'll call it the southwest corner, that's going to create an easement of your driveway across the, the new lot, and pull that corner back a little bit to avoid the need, the need of, necessity of an easement in the future?
One thing, you didn't talk about our driveway?
Yes.
Yeah, no, the plan would be, should we put it up for sale? We've been living there since 1990, and the driveway's ready to be resurfaced, so we're just gonna, we're gonna move that part of the driveway over a little bit.
Issue solved? Thank you.
There it is. John brings up an interesting point, the easement. We seem to get caught up in easement conversations all the time, right? From meeting to meeting to meeting. I know that's not necessarily your issue, but when we talk about lake access, right? That's when easements come in, there's impact on neighbors, all those types of things. At this point, are these two lots going to have lake access that would, or participative easements or access to the lake?
No, there's no lake access involved.
Dan, I have to apologize, but can you come up to the podium and state your name for the record and?
Okay, yeah. I'm Dan McInerney, this is my wife Lucy, we're the property owners, and to answer your question, the lot we did split off has no lake access, and the proposed split off lot don't have lake access either.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry to ask this, now that you just sat down, but...
He was just waiting for you to sit down.
I know.
I can hear you better if I'm up here anyway.
I'll follow this.
I, I needed the time of your walk to think of this question, but the easement, so it's, it sounds like the intent would be, if this is approved and has gone forward, it's not your intent to have an easement across the, this new, but instead, your driveway will get relocated off of that property to be free and clear?
Yeah, you will see, yeah. We'll just, you see, there's a short part that, that swings across this proposed lot. We're just gonna swing it out around there, so it's not, not anywhere near that lot. I mean, trying to make that, that lot nicer, and, and the reason we wanted to have it wider earlier on was, I figure the wider the lot that we split off, the less grass I have to
You have a bunch of slack.
All right, thank you, that clarifies it.
It would be appropriate for the Planning Commission to add that as a condition, is that the driveway be moved off that property line, or property, new lot, it's a good idea.
That seems to make sense, especially that that's your intent. It, it just simplifies the lot split, to not be dealing with that as an element.
So do we word that in what way, like that no easement would be issued for existing driveway as drawn?
Or I would just simply say that the driveway be moved off the new lot before it's filed with the county.
With the split, okay. Excuse me. Well, here's the intent. I mean, I'd like to split the lot off before there were any, if it was sold or there'd be any building permit or anything like that, certainly the driveway will be gone.
Okay, so that we can tie it to the building permit, then?
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
And that's when the lake access would be addressed as well, right? At the time of building permit, or how will that work?
Well, lake access isn't a part of this, right? Because he's maintaining ownership of the one lot that's riparian that has the lake access, and so there, there's no implied lake access with neither the, the first of three lots that were split off, nor the second of two lots split off, right?
It's just a non-reparian lot within the shoreline ordinance.
Right.
A laundry, thousand-foot laundry.
But it's a good question and point well taken, because we've reviewed a couple recently that did have access in the context.
Over and over and over again.
Okay, well, I, I agree with all the feedback. This seems pretty straightforward. I think that even though that the, the frontage isn't meeting the, the letter of the law, I think it's meeting, meeting the intent, and this seems like a reasonable request, and especially considering prior conversations that have been agreed upon, and even though perhaps ordinance has evolved over time, I think the understanding was a common one, and it still seems to have good intentions, so. Any other discussion before we open it up for public hearing? All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and if anybody wants to share any thoughts, you're welcome to step to the podium and state your name and address, and any feedback that you have. Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any further discussion, or anybody care to make a motion?
I know there's a draft motion here somewhere. We would make a motion to recommend the city council approve the variance to reduce the lot width from 125 feet to 110 feet at 6550 Astro Trail, based on the findings listed in the staff report, with one condition, that the existing driveway crossing parcel A be removed prior to issuing a building permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? All right. Sounds like this will move forward. Do you have a date for the plant, for the city council meeting?
January 14th.
January 14th, all right. Thank you for your feedback.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll move on to discussion item 3B, which is lot cover. Who's gonna walk us through this one?
So, I will. The maximum impervious surface coverage in, in Victoria for a single-family lot zoned R1 is 35%. For a lot zoned R2, it's 40%, so it goes up 5%. In the shoreline district, the maximum impervious surface is 25%, so it's more restrictive. In the past couple of years, the city has allowed that maximum impervious surface coverage to exceed for, a lot of times, swimming pools. And it's only been a handful for, or two or three instances. And the reason why for swimming pools, even though swimming pools are not considered impervious surface, is a lot of times they have the patios around the swimming pools, and that's what kicks it over, the maximum impervious surface coverage. For your conversation, I just picked out six examples to show you what the maximum impervious coverage is required, and what the lots look like, and what is actual out there. So this one is a lot size of 17,000 square feet. Lot coverage is 33%. The maximum lot coverage is 25% because it's located in a shoreline district. This one, again with a pool, lot size is over 24,000 square feet, lot cover is 30%. Maximum lot coverage, lot cover is 25%, again, because it's located in the shoreline district.
Hey, Pat?
Yes.
For clarity, I apologize if you already said this, but those numbers that you have in the bottom, lot cover 30 and maximum 25, is that the actual, or is that the requirements? Are you saying the requirement is 25 and the actual shown is 30?
Correct.
Okay.
So both of these, they're over the, the required amount. So actual is 33%. And again, I didn't take it off a survey, but it's pretty darn close, so I just, I did GIS and I went around all the hard surfaces, and I minus out the swimming pool area. So...
So the water surface itself is not counted in that?
Correct.
Correct.
This one, lot cover is, or lot area is close to 17,000 square feet. The lot cover, existing lot cover, thanks for clarifying that for me, this existing lot cover is 41%, the maximum lot cover is 30% because it's a PUD. So they're 11% over what is allowed. Again, this one's, another one is 15,000 square feet. Lot cover is 7% existing, and then the maximum lot cover is 30%, and that's by a PUD. This one's Arbor Woods. This one actually meets the lot cover requirement. It's a 10,000 square foot lot, lot cover is 28%. Whispering Hills, lot size is 6,300 square feet. The existing lot cover is 48 and a half percent, and the maximum lot cover for the associated single-family is 55%. So that one meets it, but again, I just want to show some differences.
Is that our, our two or three, that one that was developed, or is that under a PUD?
It's a PUD, but I think the 55% meets the R2 standards, right? So I, I did some surveys of eight communities around the Twin Cities, and four of them don't have any hardcover limits or lot cover limits unless it's, the lot is located in the shoreline district. And I think what they kind of rely on is just the building setbacks to kind of control the lot cover, the front yard setback, three yard setback, and the side yard setbacks, and essentially to say you can build within that, in any of the driveways, patios, or what have you, you can have as much as you want, unless you live, you're located within 1,000 feet of a lake.
Pat, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just because we're on that topic, I don't mean to keep interrupting. Do you think that that has to do with, like, administration and enforcement? So as, as an example, if it's related to setbacks, that's, that's governed by, through the permitting process and more easily sort of managed from a city staff standpoint. From a site permeability standpoint, that's more of a calculation that, you know, as homeowners continue to make improvements, are they, is that being tracked in a different way than the permitting process?
It's a very good question. Building permits, I think everybody knows you need a building permit if you're going to add on to a structure. I don't think everybody knows that you need a driveway permit if you want to expand your driveway, or that you need to submit a survey if you want to put a sidewalk around the side of your house.
Right, or a patio off the back of your home, or, or a deck, or you're building a doghouse, or you're putting up a shed, or, I mean, all these things seem to happen quite often organically, and whether they should or shouldn't, they do.
Right.
But maybe not, is it because there's a lack of understanding about what the impervious surface relates to, how it relates to that?
And at City of Excelsior, we, every newsletter in the spring, we would highlight. If you, if you're adding a patio or expanding your driveway, you need to check with the city, because you have to submit a survey to make sure that you were under your hardcover limit.
Okay, thanks.
I was unaware. I just did that last summer.
Right.
So with that...
What's your address?
When I, when I hire the, the contractor, the subcontractor, I just trust that they know that it's within the rules. I just trust that.
Yeah, which is, happens a lot. I'm in that end of the business, and that, that's not always a good thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
All right, but, but going with the impervious surface portion of it, eight years ago, eight and a half years ago, when I asked this question at the beginning of my career as a planning commission, Holly Kraft had stated to me, she goes, "The reason we have a limit in place, would it be 30%?" She says, "'Because we know it's gonna grow by 15%." We know people are gonna add a patio. We know they're gonna add the doghouse, the playground, the hard playground, maybe the, the zoning shed 200 square feet and under. We know this is gonna happen, so if we can, if that's our total goal really, is 40%, 45% for these lots, we can base that on the 30% rule, because they'd, they'd looked at some properties after 10 or 15 years, and they said, "Hey, wait a minute, you know, look at the hardcover now, it's grown by 15%." So they know there's an inflation value that's built into living in a property for a certain while, and having a lower restrictive limit keeps that down too, because if we say 45%, it's gonna grow to 50 or 60% by default with all permits and minor projects, or whatever you want to call it. Those things happen. That's part of, part of owning a home, is putting what you want on that property and what's usable, and people don't always think of, "Let's see, I'm at 29%, I can only add." You know, they don't think that way.
And that extra 15%, if I'm understanding this correctly, is being covered through the PUD anyway, right? Because those are...
Not necessarily, because of the PUD, and some of these, especially older PUDs, are at 30%, so it's even more restrictive than the R1 zoning district is at 35.
Following up with Todd's comment, if we have this ordinance, it can't be more than 30%, assuming that it's gonna grow to 45%, so are all these properties that are now outside of 30% some sort of violation that we should be dealing with? Not that we're going to, but is that what this ordinance is?
Well, let me finish my presentation, and then we'll get to these questions. Be great, thanks. So it seems like, from just looking at the aerial, that 35% is working pretty good for the R1 zoning district. A lot of the houses are under 31, 35%. However, most of the subdivisions have been approved under a PUD, which has a, a lot of times, has a hardcover at 30%, so a little more restrictive. The two examples that are located in subdivisions that were approved with the PUD have a maximum lot cover of 30% that went above and beyond, and they, again, they had swimming pools. The swimming pools need permits, and the city allowed the additional lot cover as long as it was previous pavers. So staff wanted to bring this attention to the Planning Commission to have some discussions, because we're always uncomfortable allowing something that isn't addressed in the zoning code. So we want to have that discussion with the Planning Commission now, and hopefully, after the discussion, we can come back with an ordinance at your next meeting to clarify all this. So some of the options that the Planning Commission could take, one is leaving the zoning and purity requirements as is, which may prohibit some residents from being able to install swimming pools, with patios that are typically installed around a swimming pool. Another option would be to allow pervious pavers up to 5% in a lot. One of the staff's concerns with that is that, and those impervious pavers don't work if they're not being maintained, and being maintained means they have to vacuum them out. Now, some of the cities that do allow it, they also require a maintenance agreement, but those maintenance agreements, you can never enforce, because you never know if people are actually maintaining those, vacuuming out those previous pavers. Hoyson and Kogler, one of the planners there, said that some of the cities are getting away from allowing those perv, pervious pavers. On the other hand, Chain Assen just approved it, so there's kind of conflicting evidence there. Third option would be to increase the lot coverage from 35 to 40% for single-family lots. And then the fourth option would be to allow property owners to request PUDs that have a minimum, maximum coverage of 30%, to go up to either 35 or 40%, not, that are located in a shoreline district. And I think staff would recommend having something more lenient than to deal with all of these at a variance level. So if, if you want to allow swimming pools with patios around them, then we would rather have you look at, you know, allowing them for everybody than to do it variance by lot, by lot, by lot. Would be our... Would be our recommendation. The other recommendation that we do have is when you look at the definition of lot cover or impervious surface coverage. Again, when I was working at Excelsior, I, I did a lot of research and the one that I'm recommending is what I would recommend for Victoria as well. And that is, um, the lot area, I put this in the staff report. But, um, definition would be the lot, area of the lot occupied by buildings, accessory structures in excess of a hundred and twenty square feet. And the reason why I put that is because a lot of times somebody wants to put up a shed of a hundred and twenty feet, so that's ten by twelve, which is, it's small, but it's, it's good sized shed. And they really shouldn't have to pay for a thousand dollar survey to put up a shed like that. This kind of would be my recommendation. Um, it also mentions gravel surfaces, so a lot of times somebody would have a class five driveway and there's always a question, is, is that permeable or not? So this definition would say that is a, an impervious surface. The building should be me- measured at the outer edge of a foundation line. So when they do a survey, they don't do a survey based on the roof line. And our current definition is based on the roof line, so when you do a survey, you do it just on the foundation. So this definition would clarify it's based on the foundation. It would allow for projections of bay windows because the bay windows, they don't have any foundations. Um, they usually have just grass underneath it, so that'd be an exception, that's not in our definition now. It would allow for permeable walkways and I, we use example flagstones and I'll show you a, a diagram here in a little bit. And then open pattern decks and stairways that are installed over a permeable surface. So Victoria's definition right now does say that open pattern, open decks, um, are exempt. But it doesn't say that it could be over a, a patio. So what this is saying is that only those decks that are over a permeable surface are exempt. So. So this is the, the diagram that we came up with in Excelsior and that's what I'd recommend us adopting if, if everybody agrees, but. So it would exclude the flagstone walkways, uh, exclude decks that are installed over permeable surface. You could see the diagram here that the roof line, um, is not counted as the hardcover or lot coverage. Uh, exclude retaining walls and landscape boulders. Again, if somebody wants to put in a retaining wall or a landscape boulder, there's no reason why they should get a thousand dollar survey to pr- prove that they're underneath the hardcover. Um, and exclude the non-habitable accessory structures less than a hundred and twenty square feet. So with that. Going back to the, the question about having a lower limit, assuming that people are going to exceed that, I don't know if that's the best way to operate. Because you, you would want to make sure that you have it so that whatever people come in with a building permit or a swimming pool permit, that that is the limit. And if they have to reduce it from one way or the other, then they have to reduce it. And you're not dealing with the variances and the variances for somebody who wants to put in a swimming pool, that's very difficult to. Regulate, either you have enough room for a swimming pool, you don't, there's not really a uniqueness to a lot to allow a swimming pool, this would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I would agree, that probably isn't the best way to operate, I'm just saying that, that was the fact that was stated at the time.
Right.
And so I was repeating, and the statement excluding retaining walls and landscape boulders, well, eh, that's kind of broad because we can't when they reach a certain height. Then we're into a building permit.
But I'm saying exclude them from the, uh, hardcover or a lot coverage equation, so I'm not excluding them from a building permit.
Yeah, that's, that can be a lot of hardcover though, if it's a steep slope, if it's a textured type deal, I mean, that, that should count when it exceeds so many square feet of coverage.
At that point, it might be helping as much as it is hurting.
We don't know that until it happens though, that, that's an assumption, I guess, you know, that, that would have to be, and then even the shed. I don't know, the, that's an old number, a hundred and twenty square foot, where that came from, because now you only need a zoning permit for a two hundred foot.
Right.
To a two hundred.
It's two hundred and twenty, uh, feet for a building permit, but we're thinking that a two hundred and twenty foot shed is pretty large to exclude from the hardcover limits. So we're thinking something smaller that you'd buy from a home depot, you install yourself, that doesn't require a, a building permit. And then their retaining wall, it's, you know, there's a difference between if you go high and you have to do certain retaining walls. The height really doesn't impact the hardcover, it's the width of that retaining wall. So you can have three feet high, but they're typically about a f- foot wide.
Typically.
And you, and, and the water that comes down on a retaining wall is going to go on one way or the other on that.
Well, a retaining wall is typically preventing steep slope, right, I mean, it's holding back, it's a separation of.
Keeps it from.
Elevation, so it seems like a retaining wall is actually helping slow down the movement of water and runoff.
It, it could, but usually what you do with the retaining wall is you add, uh, drain tile to it, so you don't wash it away. It's usually a, a mitigated system, so it actually floods the water out of that area, so you don't undermine the soils. That's what ninety percent of them have, anything that's a structural type wall has that built into it. Now, just a convenience, uh, aesthetic one, that's what you're talking about, yes, I agree. But once we get into a steep slope and we say, okay, we're going over four feet, we're going so wide, we have to have it so wide, we're going to use two foot boulders. I mean, now we're talking a structure again, we're talking as much hardcover as my driveway, my patio, if, if, the, if that's what the yard takes. So I hate to have general language like that, I would say it'd have to be maybe, uh, but. Walls, a landscape boulder, retaining wall that doesn't require engineering or permit. You know, put, throw some language that minimizes it. I think that'd be the, a way to go about that anyway, to include small.
Yeah. I'll, I'll add another perspective to this, which is, which has always been a, a challenge for me, which is it. Like, I don't feel like all permeables, all impermeable surfaces are created equal. Right, so like as an example, for a typical suburban lot where you've got a, a steep driveway. And, you know, a roof that has gutters draining to a driveway, draining onto the roadway, you know, getting the water off directly into the, into the roadway, that, that's like the largest offender. Right, like that seems like the kind of runoff that we're trying to prevent. But then there's this other stuff that, that happens that is, you know, within the, the field of, uh, permeable ground. Right, it's things like a retaining wall or these flagstones or, or even like when I think about the, the paver surrounding a pool. Like, that is different to me because that, that is draining off to the, to the ground. Long before it gets to either adjacent lot or to the street or, you know what I mean, like, so. I've, I've always struggled with how we, how we think of impermeable surfaces as, um, one size fits all, that they're all sort of treated the same. When it feels like the, you know, the real, at the core of impermeable surfaces is try to like control water on the site. In a, in a way that's not just trying to make it someone else's problem, either my neighbors or the cities, get it out to the street.
And I would agree with that in general, or at least half the time, but if you've ever seen a pool put in with a flagstone, a non-poured surface, it's drain tiled. And a lot of them, they take it and it's going into a sump and it gets discharged to the city's discharge thing. Because they don't want that saturated ground there, that starts failing everything around the pool. They try to keep it as dry and structured as they can, so they do have, if it's a permeable surface, especially on slope lots and everything. Their drain tile to the lowest part of their yard and their crate and, you know, if it goes to the yard or it ties into the city, like, our city came in years ago and put in drain tile connections. I was so opposed to that, you couldn't believe it, I said, we're taking the water that's supposed to stay on our lot, get soaked into our aquifer. We're dumping it into a pipe in the street and dumping it in a nerd pond that we got to pay to have clean. And that's, that's the type of things we have to try to avoid, but, and pools are one, one huge one with that. Especially permeable, they call them permeable surfaces, but they drain tile. So you're in part correct also, but eh, you know what I mean, there's things that are, don't appear to be perme- or that are impermeable, but they're drain tiled.
But the, but the type of thing that you're talking about, that is, that is, that sounds to me like an engineered system with some intent, right? That, that sounds different than, you know, the incidental flagstone path or the, or. You know, so is there some differentiation that can be made, right? So if there's, if there's some intent, you know, an inju- you know, it's almost engineered in some way to quickly move water from one place to another. That's different from the stuff that, you know, organically is being created in the yard and, you know, fire pits and.
And that's kind of what I'm getting at, I guess.
Right, so rather than lumping all those things as being created equal and restricted to all of them, is. Is there a way to quantify or capture the stuff that is clearly trying to capture water and move it quickly elsewhere?
Right, and.
You, you know, whether it's, you know, defined by drain tile or, or, eh, it's a question, I don't have the answer.
Eh, eh, the only way you can do that is to review it, to see what the structure is, what are they putting in? If, if it's just one of these little, we, we know it's not an issue, it's not a huge retaining wall or a, or a pool. You know, if they say, hey, we're going to put this permeable surface and we're going to drain tile and we're going to pump it off our lot and get it away, so it doesn't ruin our structure around here, soak back into the house, uh. Or float our slab on, around our, well, then we have an issue there, I mean, we're defeating the purpose then. Because we're, we're doing the damage that we don't want to do instead of just letting it soak in. But if they had a system where they could have it and just let the water stay on that surf, or stay in that area.
So it seems like we should be able to communicate that, that expectation. Right, we should be able to develop some language that.
I would agree with that.
Either, either suggest review, but also how can we state the intent, right? The, the intent is to, to manage the water, especially those systems which are, um, you know, quickly shedding water or displacing water or, you know, engineered systems, but. But that doesn't necessarily apply in the same way to, you know, other examples, you know, flagstone walkways and, and fire pits and. You know, small, non-permitted, uh, retaining walls.
I think I understand your direction, your thought process, Todd, it makes sense, but typically in a residential application that I'm, that I'm familiar with, you don't see those type of engineered walls. I see it often in a commercial aspect. It would definitely apply, okay.
We just. But different area, you know, it, it all depends on your topography, which we have here and what we're trying to keep, that's what you're going to see.
Can this be addressed just through the permitting process when they, you know, come to the city requesting a permit, cannot be managed there versus. Case by case by case scenario, um, it just seems like it could be streamlined through the permitting process.
And I think with creative engineering that comes through and when they do the plan review on these things, there is a, there is a permeable encapsulated, drainable. Uh, systems that are like cubed, they're putting the ground as cubes and they're like imitation ground. Where they allow the water from the pervious surface to float down through, but you don't tube it away. You let it mitigate itself through that and it doesn't decompose the land or it doesn't, uh, what am I looking for, erode it, if you will, because it's encapsulated. In a, most of them are like a, a nylon bag, if you will, it holds the structure. Uh, like they do on highways with styrofoam, kind of, that kind of keeps that in place if there's water around. And it's, it's a building component that you're going to see more of because people don't want it, they want the water to soak in, but they don't want it rushing off. So it's a, it's a sustainable method coming forward, you'll see more of, I guess. But that's where it is to head off, I believe, is at the permitting process, uh, on some of these larger structures.
So, uh, a couple of answers, one is, um, we do have an ordinance provision about, uh, drainage, um, off your lot. And our city engineer reviews it so that you're not draining all your water on your neighboring property. They reju- re-review every building permit and the granting permit along with those building permits. And I forgot the other answer to your question.
Well, may- maybe I can set you up, Pat, from an administrative standpoint, I think we're also talking about two different things, right? One is the, the review at a development level, but the other is the, the day-to-day review of individual homeowners coming in, you know, years after their home has been built.
Right, that's, thank you, that's the other question. So again, what we try to do, um, at staff level is make sure our building permit reviews are black and white. So it's nice to have some fluffy language about trying to not, um, allow drainage that would, you know, flow hard. But it's very difficult to enforce that, so, um, for example, in, Jeff brought a example, that, a lot of times if you have a, a roof. That had gutters and that the gutters were capturing all that water and pointing it into four different spots, that's not the best thing, but there's nothing that. Besides, if it was running off on your neighboring property, there's nothing that we can do to regulate it. Um, otherwise, there's some houses, mine is example, that I just let the water just fall right off my, we don't have gutters, so the water just, and we have larger eaves. It's, they stick out a foot and a half and the water just comes right down on the property and then it doesn't impact, so. That's an example, what Jeff is talking about is that two different hard surfaces, the roof lines, but they can have the two different totally impacts.
Depending on your soil type, you can get away with that or not and.
Right.
You know, I, I understand that, um, I understand all of it, I guess, just seeing every edge of it. But we've just, we've, and I hate repeating that, I've been there for thirty years, but I've seen more water run down our street and ponds fill up. And stuff that shouldn't be there, that should be absorbed through our land than I've ever seen and it's, it's just getting worse, that's where our lakes are more polluted. Because all the water's running off to these properties.
And.
Is there a way to change, so let's say that there's a, a larger slope, is there a way to have tighter restrictions in an area that has a known higher slope?
So we do have tighter restrictions around Shoreland and those shorelands usually have the larger, the steeper slopes, uh, around lakes. So that does help. Um, and as you could see in, none of those four options that staff gave you is to say that you should go with no limits. Um, because this is a city of lakes and we realize that, so we were suggesting if, if you want to increase the limit, to increase it maybe five percent. But I wouldn't, we wouldn't suggest anything like going to Eden Prairie or like even like Minnetaka, or they didn't have any regulations unless you're in the Shoreland owners.
I, I hate to beat this death, but I got a couple more points to make, um, so it, does our ordinance actually read from the overhang?
Yes.
On the building?
So it's by the roof line.
Because when we do setbacks, we do it off the foundation.
Correct.
So that'd be more consistent then.
Right.
So then if we increase this, there's people that have built structures that had to reduce them or keep them reduced in size from what they wanted. And now we're adding the roof line, or taking that off and we're adding five percent.
Possibly, I do, I find it hard to believe that we looked at any surveys with the roof line. To figure out what the hardcover was.
We don't, no.
Right, because surveys don't have them on the roof lines, but it's in our definition.
Yeah, I, I was going to say that, I built a shed in my backyard and I was restricted to the thirty percent and I, I wanted it just that much more bigger, but. It was off, they definitely did the survey off the, the structure, so.
Right.
That's, I think every reference we've ever made to a structure setback or any reference to hardcover, it's always been from the foundation, so. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear and then, you know, so then, once again, five percent more, uh, onto my shed would have been nice too, but. I can see people wanting it going forward also, because it is their land to use too, so that's the whole other side of it. You know, and that, why are we the most restrictive community or one of the most restrictive, I, other than the fact that we are the land of lakes and parks and we have a lot of clay here that runs off water fast. I mean, up in the neighborhood I live up in by the park up here, it's, it's all clay. And that water will pond and run off faster than you can believe up there, so that's.
Well, on the one hand though, does, um. I mean, aside from your, the history that you've personally experienced with your property, when you think about, does that five percent compensate for some of that informal expectation? You talked about from past community development directors' perspective of, you know, this is going to happen anyways, so instead of planning one way and just expecting for it to happen. Is it just better to more explicitly plan for ultimately what is deemed appropriate?
Are you asking me if I have more than thirty percent hardcover? Because I'm not quite as easy as Mr. Wickman.
That's, that's, that's why I was careful to say this, this has nothing to do with your property, but with your experience. Your experience in terms of from an administrative side, you know, it's one thing to say, well, it's going to happen, um. Organically, illegally, whatever the term is, naturally, across this, across this community. And so, but having that as a common understanding makes it difficult to enforce, because are you, are you enforcing what the, what the letter of the ordinance says, which is the thirty or thirty-five percent? Or are you enforcing the thirty-five percent, yeah, but we knew it was going to grow a little bit over time anyway, so I'm not going to worry too much about forty or forty-five, but now. At what point do you really, as a city, take action? Because. Because i- if what you really want is forty-five, then say you want forty-five and hold the line at forty-five. Or if you really want forty, then say forty, hold it at forty, manage it to forty, enforce it at forty.
Yeah, I, I, the enforcement thing I'm sure has never happened, you know, unless it was complaint ba- based, you know, or someone said, hey, he's got two huge sheds on here. His water's running, flooding my air, you know, it would be complaint based at that point, so I honestly, you know, the five percent isn't gonna make a huge difference. So I don't believe other than people building garages like me or putting pools in our, even get close to that coverage or, uh, have a problem with that coverage limit. You know, I think that's the two, two driving things there, the, the extra big shed, thousand square foot shed or nine hundred square foot and then the pool. So.
The city does have the authority to issue a fine or a penalty or whatever if someone is creating flooding. On their neighbors, correct?
Well, we try to work with them before we find them. I, I don't think we find too many of, uh, property owners, we, we do have the authority to do it, um, but we try to work with them first.
And it's a state statute, it's in the building code that that can't be created, so it's a, it's a well governed thing, that's for sure. Cause that used to be a huge problem, people dumped their sump pumps outside, well, and their neighbor was five feet lower than them and that was the wrong way to do it. Um, one other question about that is, another discussion we had on this six years ago or seven years ago, when it came up again for whatever reason. Uh, I was under the influence that this hard coverage, uh, was driven by the watershed district also. They had input on it and was it the lakes or the DNR or someone that, and maybe that was just shoreline that I'm getting at. And not the general.
Right, that'd be the, the shoreline, the DNR, right? They are concerned with total lot coverage, but we also have to be reasonable as well. So if you do kinda see things that are exceeding what you have, um, you may wanna look at it or you may just wanna, again. Just say no more than thirty-five percent or whatever it is.
I personally like the staff recommendation, increase it, make it simple, but keep it clean, it seems contradictory the way it is right now. A cleaner definition, I think it'd be fantastic for all of us moving forward.
I'd like to want, add one more talking point, since we're thinking about this, there's a lot of innovation and movement in this space. When we talk about like, the, what is a permeable paver? And, um, I think that by definition was pretty narrow in the past. But I think there's a lot of new products coming online that, both in terms of sustainability and also. Uh, well, this whole concept is about sustainability, right? But, um, there are various engineered, um, asphalt and driveways and paver products and stone part, there's. I'd expect that to continue and so I'm wondering how we account for that, one. And the other is, um. How do, how do we account for, um, the intent to deal with water responsibly? So, as an example, recognizing that as hard covers moving water, if there's an individual homeowner that wants to. Account for that, either pond it or, you know, deal with it in a responsible manner. Is there, is there room to account for that? So that as the, as some of the examples that come with, um, swimming pools and, you know, development around them. And, you know, walking paths and those kinda things, and they, they start exceeding that amount in some ways out of necessity. To, to maximize their use, is there some offset to actually collect that water and deal with it onsite? That can be factored into the discussion?
I, I think we've had discussions about it with the master water stewards that, uh, design rain gardens and stuff like that for individual lots and properties. So they can mitigate excessive, uh, o- overflow runoff. Right, I mean, stuff like that I think is available that.
Resources are out there.
I feel like we've, we've talked about it and, you know, talked about that, maybe it was in the context of like a, a PUD and those kinda. But when we're thinking now at the individual homeowner, because that, cause that's how individual home sites evolve over time. Just naturally have, have a desire to continue to improve your site and maximize the use. As we're reviewing the language, is there a way to account for that or enable that review or discussion?
It, I think it's a, a good idea, um, however, from, speaking from my own practice experience. Um, I had a, a rain barrel, um, that I used on the corner of my house and it was a fifty-five gallon rain barrel. But it would flood whenever you got a pretty good rain event and then it's flooding right by the corner of my house. It's not, uh, cause I took the downspouts out, um, and then when it's full and your garden is all wet. Because it doesn't need the, the water, what do you do with that extra water? And so when it was dry and my garden needed water, uh, there's no water in my rain barrel to use. So it wasn't that effective and then the, I also, in another house, I had a, a rain garden and it never grew. And it was one of the ugliest things I've ever seen, so my only concern, i- it's a great idea, but my only concern is if you allow. Uh, like a larger house or a, or a larger patio based on these best management practices. If they decide this thing's not working or it's ugly and they wanna get rid of it, then, then you're stuck with the extra hard cover. So I think it, the intention's good, I think it, but there's a lot of, uh, questions with it.
Would another example be a, like underwater retention pond, underground retention pond, would that be?
What?
It could be cost prohibitive in a residential setting, right?
Very much so.
Back to the, Jeff, your, your pavers, um, I do see, um, on some driveways where they have. You know, concrete slabs that have the squares grass growing in and that's something that you, um, that works. And I've, I've seen people in- install those and they've been there for years, that's something we could look at.
The city of Victoria even did a test.
Yeah.
There, there was a, um, it was probably four or five years ago that, uh, that they, they tested this someplace. Um, I think it was an access road to a pond where they put that product in, does anybody else remember that?
So those type of pervious pavers, I think we can look at that don't require maintenance, um, but people can still use them. And the water still flows in kinda like a flagstone, I, we could look at some language of that.
Well, I think that, I would encourage us to consider some broader definition of pervious pavers as not, you know. Because I think that will continue to innovate based on the industry, there's a lot of push from a sustainability standpoint. From lead green building standpoint and how to deal with, um, sustainable sites. I'd, I'd expect the innovation to continue and so there, there should be some account, accounting of that, um, as an alternative approach.
Do these items have, um, saturation ratios for each like building material? Is there a way to qualify what is acceptable for maybe a new innovative item versus not?
There's a wide variety of product out there that I've seen and a lot of it has to do with the installation, the base, the tile.
Maintenance.
Technically, the patio that I might have seen going recently, um, should have been impervious. Um, but then they finish with a palmeric sand, which makes it non-impervious, so there's just a lot of variety of product out there. So it's hard to define exactly what we should or shouldn't do based, it really comes down to the engineering and the installation, how it's done. It goes well beyond the product, at least from my experience and what I've seen in the industry.
So are you looking for a recommendation on one of these four options?
They're not. Um, it's not one, either or option type thing, um, but it would be good to get comments on all four. That'd be, that'd be helpful.
All right, well, let's talk through them, so let's start with the first one, so. Leave the zoning and PUD requirements as is, may prohibit some being able to install swimming pools and patios. Those swimming pools are not counted as lot cover.
We need to make a change and move away from that one. Getting things up.
Increase it a bit.
Yeah, is there consensus to move away from as it exists today? So the second one, allow pervious pavers up to five percent of a lot. So you're saying beyond the, the thirty percent, let's say the requirement for a lot is thirty percent. You're saying allow an additional five percent to be pervious pavers.
Correct.
To get to a total of thirty-five percent.
Correct.
Okay.
I think it sounds wonderful, but hard to maintain and manage if there's some maintenance thing that we're needed, we should be accountable to. Sounds good on paper though.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, at least it gets people, they, I, I think the biggest problem is people don't even think about this. It's just not, it doesn't even show up, I, I've worked with the, I'm the representative also for Victoria on the Carver County Watershed. And they, this is all they talk about and there, there's a lot of education that needs to be done. They'll even work, if, if homeowners, individual homeowners wanna do something like, you know, have a project, there's funding available, but they'll match half of it. It's like, show us your project, we'll help you out, it's, no one knows about it. And I think at least within impervious, yeah, there's issues with those, but they're, they're definitely getting better. But at least they're thinking about it, which is a huge step in the right direction.
And it's more expensive, so let's give them a benefit.
Absolutely.
I like the thought, I just don't like the language about the maintaining, the vacuuming, cause I don't know who's gonna main, who's gonna govern that?
Right, it's one, it's, it's again, it's one of these, you ca- you just can't, right? And they do fill, it's just like putting that polymetric sand behind it, I mean, it fills up and that's it.
We could, we could try to look at some pervious paver, um, systems that don't require maintenance. Like they mentioned, the, those blocks that have the grass in between, but you could still drive over them. Between now and then.
Well, I think, um. Yeah, you, you kinda touch on a, a challenge there that, when we talk about the challenge with maintaining and vacuuming. Like that's in the context of, of a type of product that we're, you know, that's very specific to a type of product. But that isn't necessarily acknowledging that, um, there may be other products that are more effective or require less maintenance available. Now, they might not be sitting at Menard, on the shelf in Menards, but they may be available. And so, you know, how do you encourage that, that line of innovation and, you know, those materials to. To do their job and work effectively, um.
And to your point, Jeff, that product that we're talking about may not exist today, this ordinance exists for a number of years.
Right, it might exist today, but also might not exist today, so, but how can we set our ordinance in a way that has that flexibility? And in encouraging the, the marketplace, because there's, there's definitely interest, um, beyond just a, a city perspective into moving in that direction.
What if we moved this, I, bullet point number three and just add the language, we encourage the use of. Impervious or pervious product, part of the lan- landscape.
Right, so the, so that's the biggest difference between two and three, right, is that instead of saying you get thirty-five percent. Plus five percent of pervious pavers, you're saying, we're gonna go from thirty-five to forty percent.
Correct.
Just straight up.
Right.
And just encourage the use of looking into other products, just to bring up their attention, Scott's point, I think it's fantastic.
Right, that would be the hybrid and maybe be more aligned with stating intent, right? That you go with bullet point three, but you encourage some solutions that are more creative, more innovative as a, as a means for review.
But is it a requirement or just a suggestion?
I would call it a suggestion, it's hard to adjust, I'm having a hard time with the requirement piece because it's, there's, this is, it's an ambiguous product. Jeff makes some great points, but I like the fact that, yeah, we should bring awareness to it, cause there is some awesome product out there. But I'm challenged with the fact that how are we gonna govern and manage the fact that somebody's vacuuming their patio?
I, I just don't like the direction it's going in, of thirty-five percent to forty percent, five years from now, it's gonna be forty-five, fifty percent. Well, we built our house to the forty percent, we need ten more for the pool, when do we stop? It's gonna keep going up and up and up and just opposed to it unless they can prove that it's a engineered product that is impervious. And is accepted as an alternate to natural ground, leave the numbers where they're at, we have enough hard cover. And that's, I'm strong in that, as you can tell, and I'm obviously in the minority, it sounds like so far, but I'm fine with that. But that's where I stand on it, I, unless we, unless, if they really want that five percent for that pool, then earn it. Uh, do the right thing and find a product that works, get an engineer involved, get a landscape company, get a hydrologist, I don't care what it is. If it's that important to have that five percent, uh, then there's gotta be a way to mitigate it. And, and just giving it to them and saying, well, maybe you should do this, that doesn't work, not for me.
What's hard is there's not a way to regulate these impervious things, there's not like, it's not like an R factor where, where you, you can, you know insulation numbers, right? It, that's the, that's the tricky part.
And if it's an approved product, have you, I don't know who does the approvals, the U of M or a hydrologist or whoever, like you're saying, for the permeability of it. But even three years down the road, the guy goes, God, this grass in this driveway, these squares looks terrible. Let's tear that out and put something in, you don't have to have permit to replace your driveway, only if you enlarge it. That's the only time you do, so that there's no way anyone's gonna ever know that they covered that surface up. It's in their backyard, the police drive by and go, oh, he pulled that flagstone out, he's got concrete in there. Nope, it never happens, but now all of a sudden we got five percent more hard cover. And I'm taking the extreme view of course of this, so, just to get my point across.
Okay, so your extreme point of view though has me thinking about this a little bit differently, maybe more where you started, which is, um. Should there, should there be a different requirement for, on the date in which a home is developed or built? Having one requirement and there be an allowance for an additional requirement beyond that, right? So what, what if the requirement for new homes was thirty-five percent? But the total lot coverage beyond that, beyond that point was forty percent, just because those are the numbers that you got. So in some ways that, that smaller limit is limiting the first build. So that we don't get in a situation where development comes in, builds to the maximum thirty-five percent. And five years later with the first sidewalk or the first yard feature that goes in, it, it blows the, the allowed. And now, you know, how do you manage that? As opposed to saying, well, in that case, they built to the maximum thirty-five, but there's, there's still a five percent allowance of additional growth. Over time, I mean, it, that's, I don't know, from an administrative point, is that measurable? But does that speak to where you started, which is, there was once a, a time where there was a belief that homes get built to a certain requirement. And they organically grow over time, well then, why not write the ordinance in a way that is managed to one number on first build? But allows for the organic growth over time, when we're talking about a single family residence is.
Like, where are you going if it gets complicated? I unfortunately see ordinances in the industry that I'm in that read similar to that. And so I'm gonna build my house to thirty percent, I'm gonna get my CO and come spring, I'm gonna add my additional five or ten percent landscape patio.
Put a time limit on it, that five percent can't be captured within five years of development.
That works.
What about change of ownership? Right?
Yeah, who's gonna?
Yeah, five year, within five years of development or change of ownership, whichever happens last.
This kinda sounds to me, Todd, maybe this is a better question, we don't, it sounds like the alternative, we just don't change it.
That's the way I'm leaning.
I mean.
That's, that's just my end of it though.
Going all the way, I suppose bringing it full circle, it sounds like it just, it shouldn't be changed.
One of the things you could do is, uh, cause what, the definition does allow some more exceptions. If you allow some of the smaller exceptions for now and see how that goes and don't leave, and leave the ordinance as is. And see if you get any variances or if you get any requests and then you can address it then, is possible.
I will say I do like the exceptions. From a standpoint of when you look through those exceptions, um, they seem in line with the intent. I mean, when you think of bay windows and overhangs and, you know, miscellaneous stuff. Rain doesn't fall vertical, straight up and down all the time, you know, it's moving, you know, overhangs and those types of things. Also water moving under a, uh, under these things, uh, or under a, under a deck in which there's ground. Ground below, you know.
And that, I mean, the measurement from the foundation line is kind of a set standard anyway for any building. Because you're changing, you can change your roofline anytime, overhangs, um, you know, whatever it is, a bay window, like you said, or a bowl window or. I mean, there's even exceptions, I know, for the building where you get your setback, this five-foot throwing property line, someone puts a two-foot bay window in. Well, now you're at three feet, you're, you're starting to break into dangerous territory of the building code now. So there's a. You know, there's a lot of things to watch there, uh, for giving up, stuff like that. But as far as, like you said, the actual foundation is the hard cover. Because there's still room for water mitigation underneath that overhang, no matter what. Especially snowmelt, I mean, a whole lot likes to pile up there. So, I'm not so worried about that at all.
So, even when, when we go back to the original six examples that you, that you started with. My sense is that those that were not, not in compliance today were a result of organic growth over time.
Not necessarily. I think some of those are because of the pools and staff approved them, because they use.
You think those pools were built with the original building?
No, oh, I see what you mean. No, they probably were built afterwards, but they were approved by staff. So it wasn't just organic, like illegal.
Sorry.
Because they.
I, I'm misusing the word organic. But what I, what I mean is, there, there's an original build condition. And then what I'm calling organic, which I'll stop using that word, is just, things organically happen over time, whether it was permitted or it's legal or not. It, it happened, but it wasn't part of the original build, so.
And do we think, you're pretty sure, Pat, that going back, that when they did figure the actual lot coverage, it was from the foundation? Even though our ordinance said from the roofline?
Again, I find it hard to believe that they did it from the roofline, because the survey doesn't have that.
Right. And it's almost an impossible thing.
Right, to measure.
Yeah.
In the past, has the city been a little bit more gracious to some of these homeowners when they have used impervious products?
Well, I think that's how they were increased over these maximum lot covers, because they're using the permeal surfaces. Permeal pavers around the, especially around the pools.
So my, my other question was, um, so if that's true, that, you know, the original build was one thing. And then, you know, all this site development that we're seeing happen over time after that point. Does that, is that telling us, is that what's leading us to say, well, what, what the sites are dictating? Or what the, what the people want? You know, is that what, is that what our five percent, you know, or this one looks like it's eleven percent? But the previous one was, I think, six or seven percent? You know, is that, is that a cross-section? Representation of, that's getting us to, you know, five percent is, is appropriate? Because that seems to be in line with, you know, by the time you, you have the first build of the home and you have, over time, pools and patios and, and stuff. Like this one's five, you know, it's not five percent over.
As I mentioned before, I think it seems like the thirty-five percent is working. So, like, for example, this one's over, because it's located in the Shoreland District, but it would still meet that thirty-five percent if it was a regular R1 zoning district. This one.
They would have built the structure bigger then. They would have built the structure.
Could have been, but.
That's, that's.
Sideyard setbacks and rear setbacks.
Right. This one is at thirty-five percent. If it was at thirty-five percent, it would be over six percent. But you could see, if you look at it, it's maximizing that lot.
Go back to the previous example, though, that, that Todd mentioned, like, so, do we think that the original structure? Is built to twenty-five percent and that we get to thirty percent just because they added a pool and some site features?
Don't know that. We don't know that. That's the information we don't have.
That's an interesting analysis, you know, is that what we're seeing, that in the cases that we're over, is it because the original build was to the limit? Along with the driveway. And then, is it that extra five to seven to eleven percent? Is that all encompassed by the pool and the site features that were added later? I mean, probably, right? Because the original build of the structure was likely in compliance. And whether it was a few percentage under, maybe isn't. But that's the condition that you're talking about, that you stayed a limit, they build the limit. Now, how do you allow for, or account for the high likelihood of site features to be added later on?
Again, it, it seems like the only issue is when they have pools and they have all the patios around those pools. Um, this is one that, they met the thirty-five percent hard cover and the seven percent. So you, you would be able to, after it was built, to add more hard cover, um, probably not to the degree of a pool at all.
From a design build standpoint, we, I never, we never talk about, for the most part, impervious surface. It's my lot width, my side yard setbacks, how wide can the house be? And with our new ordinance of eighty-five foot lots, you'd be surprised how many homes don't fit in that lot anymore. Because you've now got a fifteen foot, what do we have, fifteen foot total side yard setback now? Five and ten? Are we at twenty? Fifteen?
Five and ten.
Five and ten, so we have fifteen foot, eighty-five foot lots, and I'm down to seventy feet. I got a thirty foot, thirty-two foot garage. Your home furniture, it's pretty darn narrow. That's where all the stuff we're seeing now is stacked, or long and deep. So with, between our side yard setbacks, our rear yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, the ordinances, a lot of this stuff. The past point is become, you wanna put a pool and then become the, and a fact. So maybe we're looking, maybe we need to clean up what we have. And if we want to get more selective in our ordinances, maybe it's more specific on the pool. And how we install pools in our community, because that becomes, seems to be our biggest issue. I could be missing something, that's just what I might take away.
Yeah, I, I'm really liking the exceptions. Um, I'm, I'm totally understanding Todd's perspective. About, you know, just arbitrarily increasing it upfront and knowing that that's just gonna increase the initial build. But I really feel like we're on to something about, how do we account for the future grow, the future growth that's naturally gonna happen? And I, I don't know if that's worthy of some research, or if from an administrative point of view, that's just a non-starter. But thinking about having a requirement that, that seems appropriate to dictate the size of the home on the initial build and when development is under review. But then having some acknowledgement or allowance for additional site development over time, over time. Is that?
It needs to be within certain, um, zoning. I don't think it can, I don't think it should apply to all, all residential zoning.
I guess, thinking about the examples of, you know, some of these on screen where if the limit was thirty percent and the home was built to thirty percent. And then, now today, they're at thirty-five or forty-one percent or whatever, and that's as a result of adding a patio. Or adding a deck, or adding a, a sidewalk along the side of your home, like, or adding a pool. How, how do?
It seems like the only thing, you know, like you said, that issues pools, I think that's because that's the only thing people would come for. People building their patios, we're never gonna know about it. You know, they add out, they make a patio, let's make it a little bit bigger. We're gonna put a pizza oven in, I wanna put some more patio over it. That's never gonna come to the city. It's just, it's a pool, because it's big. Or a major retaining wall where there's structural engineering, where, where, you know, somebody's doing something. Otherwise, I, it probably goes back to Holly's point, here's again, we just aren't gonna see it and they're gonna do it, and it's just gonna grow.
Until there's a truth in housing where they make them clarify and measure their pervious surface, like some cities do, or going to, or going away from. Both directions on that. That's a truth in housing deal, that'll get exposed then, but, and who wants to demo? But I've seen it happen, I guess, so.
Seems like it's, the consensus is to leave it as is, but allow for these exceptions. And then hold it at that, and we can always change in the future if we need to.
You okay with that? Makes good sense.
Yeah, it, especially if you can, I mean, grabs, if this is happening consistent more and more and more. Yeah, I mean, you'll, you'll be the one exposed to it.
Right.
At that point, you should bring it back to us and, uh, we can maybe explore it then, if, if that's what everyone agrees on.
And then you, if they're coming for permits on pools, right, that would be a building permit, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, you maybe look at it at that point.
Right.
Right? I mean, I mean, it would be.
Right.
I don't know if it's a planning commission thing not, or a building, building permit thing or not. But maybe that's the point when you do it, right? Because that's when surveys will take place and all that type of stuff.
Again, I just, um, say that at some point, you just have to say no. So there is a, one builder that came in and said, hey, can I have a permeal driveway? Because my property, my owner, or this, the guy who wants to buy this lot, wants a larger house, and then when it's allowed by the maximum pervious, I said, no. He may just have to buy a different lot.
That's reasonable.
Totally reasonable, yeah.
Creative, but no.
So, are we all good on that?
Good enough?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. I'll tell you what, just to, for the Carver County folks, the watershed people, they, they'll come and do workshops. I mean, if you wanna talk to them, they'll come, they are gung ho to get into cities and talk to people about this. Seriously.
That's a really good point, and I think we should have a handout, something like that. So when people do come in and they wanna talk about hard cover, we should be able to give a handout and said, here are some ideas, uh, that the Carver County have already recommended.
Give it to builders and the land developers too.
Right.
All right, should we move on to the next item? Uh, next item on our agenda is item three C, and this is the docs ordinance. And, um, Pat, from a administrative standpoint, it's, I don't think the public hearing is still open. But we continue the discussion to today's date at the, at a previous meeting, right?
You continued the public hearing until today's.
Continued the public hearing.
Yep.
Okay. So, um, in terms of a motion needed tonight, is it simply a motion, um, extending? The opening of the public hearing to the February nineteenth?
Yeah, I, I would just say, continue it to the February nineteenth meeting.
Okay. So I'll move that we, uh, extend the opening of the public hearing of the docs ordinance. To the planning commission meeting on February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next on our agenda is the council meeting updates. We had two of them, November twenty-sixth and December tenth. And I'm gonna start by admitting my, um, my folly in terms of, I, I watched the video. For what I thought was the eleven twenty-six meeting, and it actually was the December tenth meeting. That Todd.
Yes.
Was assigned, and has lots of good information. So I actually don't have anything to offer for the November twenty-sixth meeting, and I apologize to everybody. I can assure you, I watched the December tenth meeting. I can offer perspective on that. But before we get to Todd's, December tenth, is there anything from the twenty-sixth worth mentioning?
No, really, you didn't miss much. I was just gonna say that they talked about hiring the city manager. They're hiring a consultant, um, and the, the, the city council approved the process of hiring, going through and hiring the manager. So, that's the most important thing.
Sounds good. So then, the December tenth meeting was epic.
Okay.
It was four hours plus, and Todd.
December tenth meeting, you can all watch it, like I did, over two nights, because it was four hours and twenty-two minutes and a few seconds. But there was some lengthy conversation, but a lot of it was the budget. They had a workshop before, I didn't, I mean, that didn't really affect us. Uh, if there's anything important in there, Pat, you just jump in and throw it, that would affect us. Uh, the Economic Development Authority meeting before, and then when the meeting started, that's when I started watching it, actually. And, um, claims roster, one item removed just for a language issue, um, some smaller things. Uh, medical training thing for the fire department, they agreed to, some monies. Anki got a permit for consumption display. Stegall Lake Land, there's a pay request for, uh, the next, up to eighty percent. I think it was, was approved. Um, they asked for a typical payment, and there's always retainage on that, if everyone knows how that works. What else? They canceled the December seventeenth meeting, which, of course, Mr. Wickman had, yeah. It's like the second one in a row, I think he's had like that. So, the, the public hearing opened up as the truth and taxation hearing, and it, it's a lot of stuff. And, uh, if you know Kathy Granello, she does such a great job with that, and I mean, she's phenomenal at it and breaks it down. And you can understand it. I'm a plumber at heart, and I can understand what she's saying when she says it. So, if you wanna watch a little bit of that, kinda watch it, because she really knows what she's talking about, and we're gonna miss her. But all the, everything that was listed, the tax levy, the budgets, um. The resolutions, the improvement, everything was approved at that time, uh, by unanimously by the council. And then the second part was the fee schedule, which the fees went up on a lot of stuff a little bit, but only through inflation. Because it hadn't been raised since two thousand twelve, most of them. And one fee they're gonna use wisely is, on the concept plan. I think they're gonna make the builder put down the fifteen hundred dollars as opposed to at the preliminary. So they have the money up front, and there's, it's like earnest money, basically. It keeps them serious, I think, and.
Well, the intent is, because our city engineer is working on the concept plan, sketch plan, and providing comments and work with the developer. So, instead of having the general tax residents pay for that city engineer time, we'd have the developer do it.
So that was the public hearing part closed down. Then new business, they approved the final plan for Lake Down Eleventh Edition. Uh, with, I mean, that was a final that we don't look at. We do just the preliminary, and that went through. Uh, one new thing on the new business was the downtown parking signage. So, people that come to Pat, business owners, and the parking task force, people that are on that, uh, found out from the businesses. And people, non-residents mostly, where do we park when we come to town? There's no signs that say parking here, public parking here, with arrows, directional or designation signs. So they threw some ideas together, Pat had some models of what we're looking at, and staff went through it. And Pat had asked the opinion of other people, and they decided on a certain pattern. And they're talking illumination or solar, something that works all the time. And they agreed up to twenty-five thousand dollars, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars on signage. And if we needed more, it was a, could be available through other funds. So they had general fund money and some downtown targeted money for that, so, good idea, overdue.
So hopefully, within the next six weeks, we'll get those signs up.
And that was a signage, oh, then, uh, discussion on the thirteen and a half acres. That, I'll have you watch yourself and form your own opinions. There was a discussion between council members that. I'd rather not make any comments on, and you can look and see for yourself what is, but it, it could affect how you think in the future. So I, I would advise you to watch it, um, because it is good information, and, you know, you're gonna have to form your own opinions on that. I'll just leave that as that.
Could I, I'll just add one thing that.
Yeah.
It, basically, the, the conversation, um, it was focused around conflict of interest. Right? It really didn't get into them, into any, um, substantive discussions around the actual property. But it was just an opportunity for some of the council members to share their opinions on conflict of interest.
Yep. That's exactly.
Is that a fair characterization?
Yep.
Can, can I ask you a quick question, Todd? You might not know the answer, and this might be a silly question, but about when was that? It was about halfway through the meeting?
Yeah, under number six, I think it was. Yeah, under the new business, the last part of the new business.
Item six C.
Yep, six. And it'll list them all on the, under the medial screen where it is, yeah. It's a pretty, pretty good little site to go on. Uh, then discussion on, uh, TIF money, monies that are unallocated yet. Uh, the discussion was whether or not it should absolutely be used within the area it was raised, or it should be used anywhere in downtown. And council agreed after the end of throwing their ideas out there, that the incoming council, with the support of the people. And the businesses and staff will decide where that should be. They weren't gonna make a decision or take action on it that night. Does that sound right, Pat? That's kinda how it went down?
Yep.
Okay, and that was the, that was all the new business. Unfinished business was the comp plan, which they, uh, which they approved. With the, um, motions or changes, suggestions that we had on it. And, uh, they thanked the people that served on the, uh, committee that designated that. And they thought it was a great job everyone did on that, so you should pat yourself on the back for that. And, uh, so that, that passed all through, and it goes to.
And they also thanked the planning commission and stated their respective, the planning commission's work and opinion on the matter.
Yep, so that gets forwarded to Met Council for review, I believe was the next step on that.
Right, correct.
Yeah, and, um, they not only incorporated the recommendations that, that we set forth, they went forward, but they added two others based on, I think, two new property owners that, that came to the, to the council or expressed concerns with city staff.
Yeah, and I, I think that was on our report too.
Right, so one of them I was gonna bring up and get your feedback on later tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so then, after the comp plan, the Salt Area Utility Extension, South of Marsh Lake Road, it kind of threw some numbers out there at it, and I believe Kara's number, or one of the numbers was with the, the well tower, new well and well tower was gonna be around four and a half million dollars, and without that, maybe three million to get our utilities extended out there. So what, the only action that was taken was to, to say yes to SRF, wasn't it? Going to finalize the plan to implement that, and then bring it back to council. So they're authorizing them to spend so much money, SRF, to finish the plan out for that area. Um, did I miss anything on that?
Nope.
Basically, go ahead. And reports of the manager, I just wanted to say, um, I personally knew Tom Stregel and Jim Crowley, got to know Kelly a little bit, and they're all moving on. Uh, if you see him, if, if you know him at all, just thank him for their service, they, I think they did a great job, all three of them, and, um, their time with us is done now, so new council coming in, new finance person hopefully soon, and, um, that's about all I got.
The one thing I'd add about the, uh, December tenth meeting, because that thirteen and a half acres was on both of those agendas, and I wasn't sure which discussion was happening on which. So now that you told me, reminded me of the, the December meeting, um, back in November twenty-sixth, they did approve the, uh, preliminary development agreement with that, um, development team, uh, to give them four months to study, come back with a plan, uh, and some financials to figure out what it's gonna take. They are moving forward with the market studies. One of the early indicators is that there's a strong demand for senior housing here, they've indicated. But I also, just to let the planning commission know, is I, even though it's not, wasn't in the preliminary development agreement per se, um, we, I've told them that they should bring their concept plan to the planning commission before it goes to the city council for approval. So, um, you probably, if anything goes well, um, be able to see that on their March, uh, meeting.
Cool. Very good.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just have a quick question, um, and I never fully understood this. I'm familiar, can you explain who the players are that are presenting that development? So, there's, there's one group I'm just not familiar with, who they are and what they're doing. Everyone else, so that's why I need you to remind me who all the three parties are.
Sure, actually, I think there's four parties. So there's Dean DeVollis, who is the architect, and he's the one who I contacted, and he's kind of leading the charge, um, but he's not a developer. So the, his development team is United Properties, and they're gonna be responsible at looking at the commercial side of the development. Thone Development, they're out of Woodbury, they've done residential and commercial, they're more on the residential side. And then, um, Sotheby's Residential would be given input on the residential market piece.
Do they have the capacity to do senior housing, if that's what the market?
I don't know if they would do it, they could, um, come to an agreement with somebody else to do the senior housing. Hopefully, the, the architect, DGR, is designing most of it though, because that's a key element.
Good. Anything else on the council meeting updates? Alright, moving on to miscellaneous. Do you have something, Pat, you wanted to circle back on?
I do, I had to think a couple. Thanks. So, um, the first one I have on the monitor is, uh, the property on the northwest corner of Rose Street and Highway five. A developer approached Paul and myself about, um, a coffee store shop there. The big question that we wanted to get the planning commission input on is a drive-through. We looked through the zoning code, and we couldn't find any reference to a drive-through, and trying to figure out, is that something that would be frowned upon or would not be an issue? I know in City of Excelsior, they prohibited drive-throughs in the downtown, because they wanted to make it more pedestrian and walkable. This is kind of on the outskirts of the downtown, but, um, since Paul and I haven't been here very long, and there's nothing for us to go through or from, from the zoning ordinance, we wanted to get some, hopefully some feedback from the planning commission on this.
So across the street is a gas station, right?
Right.
That seems compatible.
The curb cuts don't line up, though. That gets tricky.
The, the curb cuts would probably be from, um, Rose Street, so there probably wouldn't be anything allowed on Highway five.
That is considered downtown, though, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's central business, yeah.
Can you repeat that one more time, Pat, what you just said?
So the curb cut and access to the site would most likely be from Rose Street, not Highway five?
Rose Street is perpendicular to five.
Right, right.
Right.
Goes north, south.
It would be, it would be a curb cut off five, then?
They would exit east onto Rose, and then south or north.
North on Rose, and then back west into the lot.
Okay, I understand, okay.
Kinda like how that dirt is already, right? It's already used that way.
Floyd's been using it for an auxiliary lot for three or four years.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not opposed to drive-through, we've got one west of town in Dairy Queen, we've got the drive-through at the bank, we've got a drive-through, big gas station across the street, and that's just kind of how we live.
Well, and it, it helps that if access is off Rose, Rose Street, you could imagine that the, that the inn would be, you know, across from the curb cut to the, we'll call it the Floyd's parking lot, for lack of a better term. But also that it's across from a very automotive centric, you know, it's across from the parking lot. You know, this is across the street from the pedestrian friendly, you know, over a block. You know, imagine it going in the parking lot of, you know, the former grocery store, for example. Like, that would seem incompatible with the notion of, you know, pedestrian friendly downtown. But across the street from a, from a parking lot, on one side, and bound by Highway five, and across the street from there, like being a gas station, that seems like, of all the spots in the downtown, that that, that could work.
It would just be a one directional, one way in, one way out type deal.
Probably. It, it could be even one curb cut, and it just goes around and out the same place.
Just a double white curb.
Right.
Those are on the building. That, that might get more congested, but, because I, I could see most of the people that are gonna come out of there are gonna, well, seem to exit out of the Highway five, but we don't know that.
The only thing I'm worried about is the left-hand turn, because you're going east on five.
Go east.
Yeah.
I know being, working with the parking committee, I know a couple other, uh, coffee shops in town that would not be happy about this whatsoever, but that's just competition.
I, I mean, there's no way to, you, that, that is so narrow, and you can't create a median, so there's no way to, to say it's a right, right turn only. I mean, there's no way to, yeah.
Coming out, you mean, exiting, right turn only?
Well, and if you did that, you'd make, you might make it worse, because you'd turn right, but then you'd turn into the Holiday Station, you'd zoom around and go back the other way.
Exactly, like they, like they do downtown.
Somebody, I would never do that, of course, that's not why.
Legal turns are gonna be left and right.
And I don't think the traffic's that heavy on Rose Street anyway to warrant a right turn only, and out of there anyway. At certain times, obviously, it could be, but.
I just, I know we can't dictate who the coffee retailer is. I'm just gonna say, though, that there are some coffee retailers that monopolize parking. And they could, depending, I'm, I'm not familiar with how big this site is, they could bleed over into Floyd's parking lot, and that becomes tricky. I'll give you a perfect example, um, five and one oh one, the Starbucks there. Piazza was in the end, they left. Why they leave? Because parking, they couldn't operate, they'd only been there a little over a year. They can't sell that building now, because they know that they're, it's underparked, because the Starbucks monopolizes the parking. And I just, I just want to be aware of this and just think, okay, how many stalls are on this site? Because otherwise, it gets, it's gonna be tricky, and it's gonna be a problem elsewhere.
And, and we know Floyd's, it's a two-way street, because they park everywhere too, with the amount of people they get on the weekend and stuff, I mean, that.
Well, this is overflow parking now, right? Isn't that what it's for, pretty much?
Yeah.
So I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it a national chain? Just out of curiosity.
Excuse me?
Is it a national chain?
Yes.
Then there's gotta be some sort of ordinances at the access point. Two rows has to be so many feet from Highway five, I'm assuming, so there'd be limited access in and out as far as ingress, egress.
Right.
I don't know what the exact footage is from the interchange, but I know there's an ordinance out there somewhere that says you can only be so close.
Yeah, it's in the right of way there. I, I've phoned it several times, because I put the lion sign up, and I had to go pick it up down the chest. Can't even advertise breakfast, so I'll get in trouble.
Thanks.
I think stacking is a really important thing, too, to just really look closely at, just stacking and.
Right.
You know.
In the site.
Yeah, we want to make sure it doesn't impact people's ability to park.
So all these things will come back to the planning commission if they move forward, so we don't have to resolve them tonight. But I just wanted to get, uh, idea about the drive-through and if that would be inconsistent or not.
And from a, from a, just one clarification. So from a stacking standpoint, we're not only talking about, um, coming out on Rose Street and stacking up there, trying to take a left to go eastbound Highway five, but there's also that center turning lane when you're coming from East Highway five and wanting to take a, turn left on the Rose Street. But at the same time, that's the same left-hand turn to stack up to turn into the gas station. And that offset actually is problematic. It's probably not problematic today, because the amount of traffic trying to turn on the Rose Street, um, likely isn't causing, you know, as you're stacking up here, trying to turn left, others coming heading east, trying to now turn left is gonna conflict with that natural center turn lane.
And we're gonna have the delivery issue too, right? We always had vendors going in, delivering napkins and all that stuff, because they go through the back anyway, if I remember correctly, for, what is it, Floyd's or whatever, we, or the new place, right? They're gonna bring trucks around behind there.
Well, that.
We talked, I don't remember it, right?
That was the intent, but they're stopping on the street for all these places, so, as of right now. Schmitty's blocks the streets, uh, Schmitty's, here, I'm dating myself. It's just when they come with a larger truck than our two and a half ton truck.
Right.
They can't, they can't make the, turn around in these parking lots.
Right, and that was an issue when we talked about something a while back.
Yeah, about using that alley for the access to the new Creamery restaurant. There's a natural loading dock there, and there's an alley, that's why we made it an alley fifteen years ago, was so we'd have deliveries back there for the businesses, and we never used it.
Right.
They're stopping on the street, so.
This will all, like Patrick said, it'll all come up again.
Yep.
Deliveries and parking and all that.
I think the heavy right turn off of there is in here, but you're right, it's a left-hand turn. That's quick, though, because that blacks up from the light so fast, I think most of the left turns end up over there.
Pat, are they, is this a single freestanding coffee shop, would there be additional retail with it?
That, we don't know. Seems like it's most likely one standalone building.
I heard a rumor, single use.
Technically, this is not a turn lane into here.
That one isn't, but this one's signed as such.
Yep, that one isn't, it ends here for this left-hand turn, but coming this way, this is not.
Right, they're all queuing up for the left-hand turn, yeah, so this is technically your, this is your inn.
Yep.
Safely.
But it conflicts with, that's your only, yeah, turn from the other direction. Okay, is that all we got for miscellaneous?
Yep. Well, no, one more. Sorry.
And there's more.
Yeah, sorry. This one, so that, as you probably know, the, the property owner, um, Schmeegs, had requested the city council, uh, re-guide this, uh, medium density residential to low density residential, and the city council agreed with that. Vogel Property came, and they wanted to re-guide this high density residential, this brown here, to medium density residential, the city council agreed to that. And then the developer for the Walter property that you see here, uh, they came and they requested to re-guide this flex area, five acres of it, to high density residential. And, in all fairness to them, what I thought I'd do is, um, read you their, um, arguments for it. And the reason why, um, staff is bringing this up before I read you their, their arguments, but Doug and I, Doug, the city manager, interim city manager, thought that this was a, an important enough, um, change that we wanted to get the input from the planning commission, and also because the mayor wasn't there at the comprehensive plan meeting, um, and then two of the people that were there are leaving, so we'll have three new, you know, with the mayor, uh, council members looking at this when they actually officially adopt it. So we thought it was appropriate to get input from the planning commission. So, with that, um, the developers were suggesting high density residential for four reasons. High density residential zoning would support both apartments and senior buildings which are in high demand in Victoria. High density residential zoning south of the railroad tracks would be a good transitional buffer between the low, medium density residential zoning to the north and the flex employment, commercial zoning to the south. Traffic generated by the high density residential would be better served by the public streets that would also serve the commercial zoning. And then lastly, having high density residential uses adjacent to the commercial uses would help jumpstart the commercial businesses and provide a more walkable neighborhood. Staff's concern with putting high density residential in this place is twofold. One, the city has very limited flex employment guided for, in the land, in, in the city. Uh, this is our only area, and for the comparison I did for the city council, Chaska has, ultimately, will have five times the amount of employment in industry area than Victoria will, even though ultimately, Victoria's gonna be having a larger population than Chaska when it's fully developed. So they'll have five times the amount of office place, office place for people to work at. Trying to, uh, increase the diversity of the tax base, um, this is important, uh, to keep that flex as opposed to turn it into residential. In Kelly's, um, presentation, ninety-seven percent of our taxes right now is coming from residential uses. So, removing the flex and adding more residential is just gonna continue that, um, um, reliance. And then the other reason is, does it make sense to put a lot of people living next to a railroad track that's gonna be, uh, still operating two to four times a day, uh, traveling sixty miles an hour? That's one of the reasons why they put the flex there in the first place, because the office uses wouldn't be impacted by somebody sleeping there and then that train going by. So, one of the other things that we try to do in our comprehensive plan is for high density is to put it in high amenity spots by lakes, by rivers, by commercial areas that people want to live by, so that in the long term, it helps, uh, ensure that, um, housing development will succeed versus something where now it's in the middle of a flex office area next to a railroad tracks. Uh, we actually don't think that's the best location for an apartment building. So, again, I wanted to get the planning commission feedback on this, uh, and then we'll bring it back to the council at some point.
I agree, Patrick, we're way short of commercial space, and the residents are, who creates the highest amount of expense? Unfortunately, do shoulder the majority of the burden, we need more commercial space to take care of this about tax burden. The, do we need high density to meet our units per acre?
No, we do not. We don't need this high density to meet their minimum units per acre by the Met Council.
Then I would recommend we go back to flex.
So the purple salt of the black line is flex also, it's just not in that owner's.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So, there is no high density other than the four point nine nine above. So, there is no high-density other than the four point nine nine above that property in that area.
Correct.
I apologize, remind me who Kelly is and um, why they asked for this change?
Kelly is our finance director.
Okay.
Um, sorry, um, she's the one who gave a presentation on the, on the, on the budget and in that presentation, at the same meeting, she said ninety-seven percent of our income is, or revenue is coming from uh, residential land uses. Um, they're asking it, I, it's difficult to, reason why they're asking it? I believe they're asking it because it's an easier development than it is for flex uses at this point. So, an office use probably is gonna take a little time to market and to create it, where they could probably get a senior housing development today.
And isn't it, isn't it true that, um, I mean even though that, the comp plan that we're talking about is a twenty forty comp plan, this is a property that is being considered to be developed now, or, or a purchase agreement is under consideration and, and so this is of the here and now in terms of this property being developed with, with the extension of utilities that would go along with it.
That is correct. It's being looked at, being redeveloped in the next year.
Yeah, so when we, I mean, all throughout the long-term comp plan process, we've talked about how this is a general guide and not necessarily set in stone, but it, it was intended to set the vision to, to guide development over time. So, I guess my initial reaction to, to the discussion is that even though I agree that high-density may not, along the railroad tracks may not be the best location, it's also, you know, other appealing sites to high-density housing is access to transportation and access to commercial, which the site lends itself to. And when we talked about the, the flex district, the um, the rail, like a practical buffer to sort of get us away from the perception of the incompatible adjacencies of, of various zoning. But, um, I wonder if, if we were to allow for this conversion to high-density, is there any reason why we wouldn't think of the flex being adjacent to, but north uh, of the tracks? Where we've got, you know, either some low-density housing proposed or some medium-density housing proposed? When, when you think about, you know, whether that medium-density is gonna be separated by the railroad tracks to flex as opposed to if flex were also north of the tracks um, separated by open space or County Road ten, so I'm talking about the, like, for example, the fourteen point eight acres? Like what if that was flex? It's north of the tracks, it gets some of that real, real estate back. There's a natural buffer of County Road ten to medium-density housing across the street and open space, it's a natural buffer to the next adjacent um, low-density residential to the west or the other medium-density residential. That could be a different way to think about it, so that ultimately you're not losing the real estate for flex. It's just sort of rethinking, um, which, to be honest, I'm not so sure, for all the same reasons you said, why high-density housing doesn't make sense right next to the tracks? I'm not so sure low-density residential, you know, the thirty-eight point three one acres or the fourteen point eight acres of medium-density right up against the tracks is the, is the best solution. Anyways, when you're factoring all, when you're having, when you're factoring all those different aspects of, um, so if, if, if we all thought that low-density and medium-density residential on, on the north side of tracks was acceptable, it seems like high-density on the south side of tracks isn't any less acceptable. And it seems like there's an opportunity, because the development of the flex actually is quite a ways out. As opposed to somebody ready to develop and, and put in some high-density today, we still have an opportunity to, to guide some additional real estate for flex if we just jump to the north side of the tracks. It's just, it's my initial reaction and having sort of heard that discussion uh, at the council meeting and now thinking about it a little bit more.
I think the development of flex is probably sooner than you think. If you continue eastward on County Road ten and look at all the dirt that's being moved and all the building that's going up, that corridor's filling up pretty darn quick. I drove by today and I was surprised how much dirt's moved the last three weeks. You've got the data centers there, you've got the eye clinic there, IVs going in, not our community obviously. The whole corridor to the south of five, there's, the whole area's been excavated the last two weeks. I haven't looked at the, their plan and what they're doing with it, but I'm pretty sure it's not residential.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, it's just that this developer on this particular site is, that doesn't sound like has the appetite for, for that much flex on that, on that site, right? So, as a city, if we're having concerns about the availability of flex, there's still an opportunity, the plan's not finalized. It's never really finalized, every ten years it's reviewed, but even like, even as we speak right now, to um, reallocate a portion of real estate for flex elsewhere to offset that desire, seems like a pretty easy change.
Very easy change.
Today.
In reality, Pat, what's the, we haven't got a pipe yet there yet and we got a thread of pipe somewhere between the north side of Marsh Lake somehow between the Schmieg property and the Hunclaw property, down to lift station, down to here, what's that realistic timeline before they even happen, then how's that get capitalized?
Within the next couple of years.
Oh, really?
I was thinking spring twenty twenty.
Right.
Okay.
Does that sound maybe reasonable?
Yep.
So that is further down, further in motion, I thought it was then.
Right.
So I, I have a few questions. So, is a developer, i- i- is this conversation kind of being stimulated because of a developer being interested in developing that southwest corner, is that, is that flex office, is that, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're looking at developing the low-density and the medium-density.
Residential.
Right.
There's a, one of the national builders, again, I heard a rumor of, that's putting LOIs out there tying land up. They're developing a parcel directly to the east of this right now and they've got three or four phases tied up, they're, oh, one of them should be up here shortly, opened up.
Well, and also, just to give this more context, the, isn't this the southernmost property of the three properties that were talked about under the south area utility extension?
Mm-hmm.
At the um, council meeting?
Right.
So, this property, uh, and then a property about the same size just to the north and then yet another one up to the north. Wasn't it those three property owners are um, in conversations with each other to have, that was the utility extension that Todd was talking about, that the city is investing in to extend utilities so that these three large sites can develop, this being the southernmost one.
There's three to be developed, one to be crossed with an easement for the utilities and then three south of that property, the Schmieg property to be developed.
One thing, you know, I'd like to just point out on this map where it says low-density, that the biggest yellow chunk immediately to the left, that land on the twenty forty comp plan does have medium-density, there is a section of that land that does have medium-density, so um, for them to say that we, we could put medium-density here, it just doesn't make sense when it could be right there. There is a water feature that creates uh, the nice component like you were speaking of. So, this is cutting off your nose to save your face.
Yeah, I think given them the high-density, uh, what, what they're looking for there gives them more flexibility to get that property built too, especially if they know an extension's coming. Cause it gives them two chances at having square footage covered, acreage covered, uh, two different products, same area. Uh, probably more viable for them, uh, as far as getting the project done, getting their project done, getting their feet in the ground and getting something built. Cause we all know our senior housing is nothing here and if that's something that can happen there, being on a transportation corridor, tracks are never good for anybody, but it's a lot better than building a half a million dollar house in the low-density on the railroad tracks.
Well, and is there anything the city is losing by not having that corner be flex? And instead, you know, I mean basically the corner of, it's not really a corner, it's, you know, edging County Road eleven and bound by the tracks to the north is, is that costing the city by get, by that, allowing that to not be flex, but instead high-density housing, right?
Yes, I think it is, yeah, I mean, you know, the goal is to create a tax base, I mean, I definitely do think it is a risk and I do think it's a loss for the community to, to just give it away so easily.
Well, I, I'll rephrase that. Um, if that same amount of real estate could be replaced elsewhere in the plan, you know, as an example, if the fourteen point eight acres, just that orange spot just north of the tracks became flex, so we're not losing any real estate for flex, just the, just the idea of converting that, that type of type of real estate from flex to high-density housing, that was, that's more like, right, if you weren't replacing the flex elsewhere, I, I totally agree that that that's a different discussion.
So, one of the things that, that could happen is that they reduce the five acres that was high-density residential to medium-density residential, just north of this and the Vogel piece. The question I would have is, why not change the medium-density that they do have north of the railroad tracks to high-density? So you still have the high-density piece to this puzzle, if they're really interested in high, serving high-density. Because what, what they, with the change of the Vogel property, um, that's gonna be a lot of townhomes um, in that area, so a lot of medium-density already. Again, the staff's concerned about the high-density next to the railroad tracks and we, I, we can, I can understand the concern about the single-family and the other um, medium-density, but if it's bad for single-family, why would it be any better for a lot more people living in an apartment building?
I, I think the individual investment drives that, if I'm renting an apartment, which I don't own, uh.
Yeah, your, your tolerance.
It's transitional, yeah, you, you know you're gonna be under some burden of something, whether it be a highway or a train station or, or a commercial property, but if I'm buying a half a million, million dollar house in Victoria, I don't wanna be in that spot, period. I don't wanna be near the railroad tracks, I don't wanna be near a highway. That's, that's kind of the idea of Victoria, is that the upper-end stuff, usually use those areas for buffer housing to build it away into the nicer homes and, and lower densities.
Let's just talk about access for a minute, looking at it, if I had an apartment building sitting in that corner of the tracks, County Road eleven, how do I get there without driving to the industrial park or the flex area first?
Great question.
Even going back to, Jeff, your argument's good and swapping out the fourteen eight, how do I, if I turn that into flex, now I gotta take my large vehicles and trucks and stuff to the residential to get there? The tracks make a very significant barrier to and from, County Road ten, County Road eleven are pretty major corridors as far as the access points. And then climbing, if I remember right, that access point of the tracks right there in County Eleven is the bottom of a hill. So, putting in another access point in County Eleven could be a little bit frightening, um, cause you're gonna put it right mid, I don't know where the hill peaks there, but it's probably, what is that gray bar, there's a pipeline or some sort, guys?
It's the overhead lines that can't develop under.
I would tend to agree with staff, I don't think that's a good change. I agree we should, we can make the change, we should, we need more flex versus less flex and the high, high density, if we can put it somewhere else, put it somewhere else. If it doesn't screw up our comp plan as far as making our units per acre. But also, we're with you, Jeff, it's developer and it's landowner and it's hard to tell them what they can and cannot do, it's their decision to make.
Well, and I'm, I'm also recognizing that, that's where the previous council ended, was that here's somebody ready to develop. You know, this is a long-term plan, um, and it seemed like they ended with uh, suggesting to make the change, right? But you're acknowledging that there's still final approval and the adjustment to consider.
Right, three of the five council members that are gonna make the final approval weren't at the meeting that night.
Right, so I'm, is it reasonable to assume that they'll, with new members, they'll go the other direction? I'm, I'm sort of coming at this thinking that potentially not, but rather than just making the change, I'm, I'm more interested in considering the long-term plan, it's really easy to change now. And, you know, thinking about the flex crossing the railroad tracks doesn't seem objectionable. And to be honest, the more I think about it, low-density or medium-density residential up to, up against the railroad tracks makes way less sense than high-density residential. Not that I'm questioning the plan, but faced with this opportunity to adjust it to allow this short-term change to happen, makes good sense. Though, I wanted to make one other point before we got too far away, Pat, cause you talked about potentially as an alternative suggesting the medium-density that's bound by County Road eleven, changing that to high-density? I would add that you can't do that unless you change the low-density residential just to the west of it to medium-density. Cause otherwise you're, you're back in that incompatible, we're, we're leaping densities and it's just, it's just not gonna work.
Good point.
There's a good amount of wetlands in, in there too that might influence some of how these homes are laid out.
Yeah, that's all, it's a little bit west of there, but yeah, you're, I mean, it's on that, on the north side of that low-density for sure. That's one of the features, I, I think.
But could that be an alternative, if, if jumping the tracks and adding more flex space to the north of the tracks, you know, down to the, in that other area we're talking about by County Road ten, if instead, putting the high-density where the medium-density is and the medium-density where the low-density and you keep the flex as it is, does that, does that accomplish similar goals? So they're still able to get the high-density, which is adjacent to the other four point nine nine acres of high-density just to the north. The medium-density then extends, just like it's zoned, immediately to the north of the site. And you leave the flex as flex. Right? I mean, that's kind of how the property immediately to the north is zoned, with high-density on County Road eleven and medium-density behind that.
Did you get that? Say that again, sorry.
So, the property immediately to the north has four point nine nine acres of high-density on County Road eleven and medium-density to the west of that.
Mm-hmm.
So if you take your, in the property in question, take the medium-density and change that to brown, high-density and the low-density just immediately to the west of that and change that to medium-density, you're essentially continuing what was zoned just to the north.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
And so now you're getting the five plus acres that you need for high-density. You're keeping your density up by changing low-density to medium-density and you leave the flex as it was before.
That makes sense.
I did a bring to the developer.
It takes care of the. Takes care of the access issue, keeps things where they need to be, that's a great plan, nice job, Jeff.
Do they already own the, own the land?
They have an option agreement, so part of it will uh, go through the concept plan, sketch plan with the planning commission, city council, these ideas, uh, then go through the planning review process before they even close on the property, so they haven't closed on the, they don't own this property and they won't until they get all the entitlements first.
Cause if they can't, cause if they can't buy it, then all this is kind of not anyway, right? But they have an option, so that's not an issue.
And, and I, I'm pretty sure they'll be able to develop with Jeff's recommendation, still.
It could just be a dollar thing they gotta figure out too.
Right.
You know, that's why they set it up this way or just adjusted or.
The low-density area, the big, the biggest lowest low-density area that you suggested changed that to medium-density? Do you think that it could be, because that soil, those soils are gonna be quite wet, do you think that's gonna impact the ability to create medium-density? Is that, are we gonna run into problems with that?
Yeah, so in the, at least in my description of the adjustment, that would stay low-density residential.
That one lower.
That's a big one.
Yeah, the big one to the left.
Okay.
So it's, because it, it's separated by Greenway, open space, so I'm only thinking the. So I'm only thinking the northernmost portion of the low-density would become medium-density.
Got it, okay.
But you're right. I mean, that question's going to have to be, even in that, that question still applies, because it is wet. It just might not be able to fit so many houses in there.
But that's the advantage of it being low-density, is that, I mean, even when we were developing this plan, we recognized that that's why low-density in these areas, you know, because these are not wetland delineations. We're seeing a pretty reasonable assumption about how much wetland is in here, but on a, as developments come in, that's why in, there's an area of this plan with the crosshatch, and this might actually be an older version of the plan.
Could be.
Is that crosshatch was representing Conservation Residential, which is encouraging the PUD, encouraging cluster housing, getting away from the wetland and the low, you know, the low areas. That's been since changed in the final plan to now all be just low-density residential. There is no Conservation District distinction. Because I feel like that change was made because it was, it was a finer grain of detail that there wasn't consensus around in this area with some of the landowners and other steering committee members, so it just went broadly to low-density residential. But even with low-density, you get the ability to either under PUD or otherwise move the structures where they need to be to allow for the natural features. So that still seems to make sense, and I'm just using the logic that, you know, if, if the site to the north can be medium-density, and that swath continues to the south, and that offsets, and then abuts high-density on the road, that seems to make a lot of sense. And if that's still a sticking point, it seems like, I wouldn't totally remove from the conversation some further discussion around, you know, changing either the, a portion of the 14.8 acres or the 38.3 acres to flex to offset flex space being lost elsewhere.
You know, I would even, I was going to even ask the Planning Commission what you guys think about that 14.8 acres right now, and just say, when this comes to the City Council, regardless of this development in the Walter property, Jeff makes a lot of good points that that seems like a very reasonable place to have flex employment as well. It's adjacent to the railroad tracks, it's adjacent County Road 10, and it's a really good buffer between that and the development, the residential development to the west with all that green space.
Absolutely. Perfect buffer.
So, we, if you are in agreement with that, I can also suggest that to the City Council when it comes back to them in March.
I don't know, I can't identify which site you're talking about. Oh, there.
Yep, so just north of railroad track, but south of 10.
Okay, thank you.
I would switch the 14.8 and the 15.8. Border County Road 10, and they both, one borders the tracks.
Yeah, the only, the only sticking point that, with that, is that, and maybe it's not because you can create a buffer, but it abuts low-density residential. So, you know, previously in the plan, having low-density be adjacent to flex with a railroad track buffer seemed acceptable. But I, you know, one could argue that that's such a small swath of low-density residential that touches, you know, if you change that medium-density to flex, then maybe that could be designed as a buffer, and it's not an incompatible adjacency.
We gotta remind ourselves, we're still talking about 10,000-foot view, and we're rewriting our plan as we speak.
Well, though, it's interesting because a development potentially ready to go now, in the context of a 20-year vision plan, forces us to dive down in a deeper grain of detail. Because up until now, from when we started the plan, all throughout, it's always been like, this is a guiding vision. As developments come in, we've got to review whether this still makes sense, whether these blocks move around, the adjacencies are rethought, and so suddenly now having to dive into the traffic, the railway, a development in hand, and having to offset some things. I mean, I heard a clear discussion around the desire for flex, and do we even have enough as shown? Right? Not only replacing what we have, but comparing to other communities, should there even be more? So, you know, if that's, if there's consensus there, and I'm, you know, that was at one council meeting, and, you know, I'm not sure how much of that we heard throughout the whole process, but if there, if this change is provoking us to rethink some of the other adjacencies to the tracks, as an example, as a potential for flex, then it actually seems timely. Because again, it's, either make the change now, or you wait 10 years to make the change, or you make the change when you're provoked by another development coming in.
I completely agree. I think we're really short on flex, but then also trying to be cautious on, we've had how many people working on this thing for a year and a half, and all the public hearings and all the stuff around it, and then here we come, and, oh, by the way, we're just going to change it real quick. I'm not sure what the public repercussion would be, and if we have the latitude to even do so. That's where my head's at. I agree with everything you're saying, and I agree if we're going to make the change, we should make it now, and I completely agree the comments made that we're really short on it. But collectively, as this committee and this group and everybody involved decided this is what we should have, I'm just not sure what, how much latitude and flexibility we have today to modify that plan at this point without going through the process again.
I, I think just the fact that it's being proposed to be developed gives us a latitude to do that, at least on that.
That area, I completely agree with, but as we continue to work.
And then just suggest on the other portion.
Right, westward.
The other section of this that's not highlighted, that's additional commercial, I'm assuming that that is commercial, but not flex. Is that correct?
The red is commercial.
Yes.
The red that's in between, or just north of County Road 10.
Okay.
That's commercial.
And an orange, dark orange, burnt orange.
That's what I would recommend, is that the Planning Commission thinks that 14.8 acres may be better in flex that when we present this to the City Council in February, March, we would suggest that they change it or look at changing it. And also, in the meantime, I can also ask Hoizen and Kogler if that would change anything, does that affect anything? From utilities or anything like that as well?
I think the benefit of the consultant input, now that we've been triggered to look at a finer, greener detail, but getting their expertise, I think that, at least for me, that satisfies your concern about. And it's not just that this is on a whim, or, you know, this is sort of factoring in new information and new feedback. And the reality is, is that once this plan is approved, which, I mean, effectively it was nominarily approved, then goes for my council review, then final approval, this is, this is the group responsible for dealing with these types of requests to deviate from the plan. And it's going to happen a lot.
We'd see it with this. It would come right back, right, making sense.
Right. So to anticipate some of that and deal with it now, I don't think it's intended to any disrespect to the process and the steering committee and public involvement. It's just that our level of detail's been accelerated.
I agree. It's much more accelerated than I thought it was going to be. I didn't think we'd see this in our tenure. To find out, we're talking about it two years from now, saying, okay.
But I think this is the, this is the exact type of conversation that this group is going to have periodically over the next five to 10 years. And then a new plan will be developed based on all that feedback and development, and so it's a good discussion.
Bottom line, we have to stay flexible.
Right, and what's nice is that there's so much, there's, there will never be more flexibility than there is right now. A month from now, there'll be less flexibility. Six months, there'll be less flexibility, because things will happen. Right? And so, here we got a chance, before the plan is even, even preliminarily adopted, or, you know, before it's up for final, final review before the City Council, it's really easy to make a change right now, as long as that change is, you know, well-grounded and factoring in some new information. It won't get any easier, the time to make a change.
Who's going to sell this vision? Right? Of flex space and all that. I mean, it's good to plan for it, but it's got to become an actuality, right? If we have a developer come in and say, I'm going to put in an apartment complex, your 97% number is obviously out of balance, but it's still revenue, right? Still tax base that's going to come in, and it'll come in sooner than later. So, if you're going to go out and start selling flex space, whose responsibility is that?
It really is the property owner, and getting a Realtor that goes out there and tries to get that flex space that's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Market-driven, though.
Which goes back to the point of, which goes back to the point of, if he wants to sell it, it doesn't necessarily have to be commercial space or flex space. It's whatever he wants to sell it for.
But that's why there's a guiding.
Right.
And that's where the responsibility of turning this plan into reality actually is necessary, or needed, understood.
I guess the planner side of me would be hesitant to just allow landowners to dictate all the land uses just based on what they can develop. There's, that's what planning is about, is setting aside what you want, where, and then trying to let the market work with it. And there are times where you're going to have to say, no, that doesn't make sense in this area. You're going to have to go back to the drawing board and find a developer. Because a lot of times, like a, a single-family housing developer is going to want to build single-family houses. That's it. They're not interested in high-density, so they may have, buy a property that would contain high-density, medium-density, and low-density, and they're going to come with you, and they're going to say, you know, the market's only telling us low-density. Well, not really, it's because that's what you develop. But a lot of these properties, they're large enough, they're going to, like this one, for example, it has low-density, medium-density, and flex, and I think it had a little bit of high-density in there, too. So it's going to challenge the developer, the property owner, to come up with some type of a plan, and they may have to sell off a piece to a flex developer, and they may not be able to develop the entire thing. So, I...
But staying committed to the plan is what results in the vision for the greater good of the city.
Right, exactly.
Because if you cave in on every individual request, then you never get to the vision, and there's, there's honor in the vision. I mean, there's a reason why it's being said.
Right. And on the other hand, I'm not saying you have to stick to this concrete. If things change and it does make sense, then, yeah, by all means, you can re-guide it.
Well, that's why you look at, that's why it's reviewed every 10 years. You've got to go back and look at it.
Sorry for that.
I won't be around for the next one. I'm telling you right now, it's 10 years ago when I started this.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
You just never know. All right, is that enough on this one?
That's good. Thanks.
All right, is there anything else in the miscellaneous we need to cover?
Nope.
With that, I'll move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.